September 24, 2024. I'll call this meeting of the Webster School Committee to order and ask that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yeah. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic or its stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As a reminder, this meeting is being recorded, both video and audio, and will be posted on the district website. Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see everyone here this evening. The first item on our agenda this evening is the discussion and approval of the minutes from the September 10, 2024, meeting. Is there any discussion around those minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve them.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Desiree, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. And just a little housekeeping, we're going to be moving around a little bit in the agenda in the interest of time for the folks that are visiting us this evening. So the first item that we're going to undertake is the superintendent's report. Good evening, Mrs. Perengeli.
Good evening, thank you. So I'm going to start with personnel update. And tonight, I want to start with a couple of retirements that we've had recently in September. Tonight, we're here to celebrate two staff members who have a combined, I want to say, 60, let me double check my math, I was doing 66 years of teaching in Webster Public Schools between the two staff members here tonight. One of them couldn't be present, and she was a little humble and didn't feel like she was a little worried about all the attention, but I told her I was going to celebrate her whether she was here or not. As you know, we started doing this about a year and a half ago, and I think it's really important to recognize anybody who has spent any time here in Webster, supporting our families, working really hard, and spending time in our district to really help our children grow and become the young, wonderful adults they are, like the one sitting next to me here tonight. So first, I'm going to talk a little bit about Carol Daly. Carol Daly was hired on September 1, 1987, and she spent 37 years teaching here in Webster. Carol's official last day was September 5 of this school year. Carol was hired as an elementary teacher, making $19,050 a year by Jeremiah Moriarty. Carol worked at the old AJ School and then went to Webster Middle School, when it became Webster Middle School, and then moved into the Park Ave Elementary School when they did the grade reconfiguration. Carol had said, you know, some of her finest times here, she just, she just always wanted to be a part of the students' lives and just making an impact for the families and connecting and making those connections and to see them grow. I can say that Carol and Patty here tonight, when I started to write and talk a little bit about them, the sentiment was the same for both of them, kindness, professional dedication, just, just really supportive, wonderful, connected teachers and speech pathologists that, you know, we are just so fortunate to have. So I want to celebrate Carol. We miss her tonight. I'm going to catch up with her. I tried to talk her into coming to another meeting. Yep, she told me she was on a plane the day after she retired. She was heading down to Florida to spend some nice time in the sun and enjoying her time there. I said, well, maybe I can egg you to come into another future meeting. We have lots of them during the year, so maybe you can build up the courage to come in. But she just wanted to thank, you know, the school, and I just want to thank her for everything that she's done for Webster. I know, Linda, you've had the pleasure of knowing Ms. Daly.
Yes, I did. So when Carol sees this, congratulations. I've already told her several times, but she and I were the first, if not one of the first, teachers, her and I, to team teach in the school system. And we did that for eight years together, and it was a joy to start to take our strengths and use them with our students, even though we had some unusual things because she taught science and we had a, I don't know if the students were crazy about it back then, but we had a field trip to the recycle center in Webster. But interesting, and to this day, because she had one of my sons, he still talks about the two, three quizzes and a test he had the second day of school. But she was, she's a fabulous person and a fa, she's touched a lot of students' hearts over the years.
Absolutely. And if you do the quick math, and I was doing it early, but 37 years of teacher and an average of 22 students a year, and we all know, some years there's many more, some years there's less, that's 814 students that she had a direct impact to over the years of her career. And you know, it's not just the students that are in front of you every day. You meet other students, you're involved with other classes, so it's just, it's just, it's really an incredible career and something you do, you do not hear. What we're talking about tonight doesn't exist anymore. You don't hear many people who will stay one place for their entire career and give back to a community like this. So I just think it's, it's dedication and it takes an incredible person, and I just wanted to know how much she is appreciated. So that brings me to Ms. Kanychna, who is here tonight, who was brave enough to come in. Thank you, Patty, because I think it's really important that we celebrate. Patty was hired on August 28, 1995, and Patty was hired as an .8 speech pathologist at Bartlett High School, and she spent her 29-year career here in Webster. Patty's official last day was September 7, 2024, where she retired from Park Ave Elementary. As you all know, we used to host the preschool program at the high school, so that's where Patty was for many years before it shifted over to Park Avenue, and at some one time, she did both locations, I believe you were between buildings, working. At the time, Patty was hired in 1995, the superintendent was Dr. Anthony Dacchioli. And going through your file, Patty, which I want to say speaks so much about your work ethic and who you are as a person, in 1997, Patty received a letter from Superintendent Milton Tigas congratulating her on her commitment and attendance in Webster Public Schools. And I looked through all the years, Patty, and you have been so dedicated and committed to Webster with your attendance over the years, and I can't tell you how appreciated that is, and that just says a lot about who you are as a person. Again, when you asked anybody about Patty, and when I asked anybody, it was just a kind, nice, friendly, smiling, who was here for kids, to do the right by the kids, to teach the kids. And Patty, you know, typically, I don't know how many students are on a caseload a year, but I know it's certainly more than 20 or 22. I know you're way up there, so about 70. So if you do the math for 70 over your 29 years, you are looking at 2,000 students that you have touched. And I know I did daycare before I even started there. You were servicing some of the kids that I knew and took care of, and it was just always such a positive experience for the students. So, you know, I want to thank your family for sharing you with us and for your commitment here. It's not only a commitment for you, it's a commitment for your family when you're raising kids and to show up here every day and be a committed member. I don't know if anybody would like to share, Amy?
Plenty of things to say about Patty, but I just think it'd be, it's interesting that I'm the one giving a speech when she has the speech pathologist in her, in her title. But when I look back on my experience with Patty, I think of a time where we went to a meeting and it was a true celebration, and I'll never forget, this particular little preschool-age student had 105 disfluencies in her speech, which is very, very serious. And here we are, a year later, and she had two. So she no longer met eligibility, and it was such a huge celebration for this, this family. They, I typically don't hug families when they, when we end an IEP meeting, but the grandmother gave me a, gave me a hug, but, and I got all the credit, and she did, she did all the work. But it's always been, it's funny, because Mo mentioned all the adjectives that I used also to describe Patty. Kind is the first one that came to mind, but then prepared, professional, and I even said, in general, a perfectionist. When it came to her evaluations and her report writing, it was always really just perfect. I tried to find the mistakes and I couldn't find any, and I did that for two years. So it was really wonderful to work with, and when I think back on the legacy that she leaves with, leaves Webster Public Schools, is that you really changed the trajectory for a lot of our students that didn't have a voice, they couldn't find the words, and maybe they didn't sound so great. And when, when you worked with them, you made a big difference. So thank you.
Yes. Dr. McKay?
Well, Patty. So I worked, I have the privilege of working with Patty for about 19 years at Park Avenue, and the words that come to mind are also kind and gentle. And I, as an adjustment counselor, I feel like I learned so much from the auxiliary staff, from, from related services. Prior to working in a school, I had no idea what like OT was or PT, because we don't learn about that stuff if you're not in one of those fields, I think, and speech. And so I'm going to tell you a couple of stories. My office was right next to the speech office for a little while in Old Park Ave, and PK, as we called her, or Pecan, as we called her, lived next door with whistles. And here I am in my office, trying to calm kids down, and the preschoolers are woo, woo, whistling, like learning their fine, you know, their oral motor skills, yes, and straws and all that stuff, and it was a hoot, let me tell you, it was a hoot. But it was a fun place to share with you, and I learned so much about speech from, from you. And the other thing I'll say is that I wish you well, and I'm really glad that there'll be one less Patty, because I had, I received many emails for PK that went for PK, and they came to me. So congratulations, and we wish you all the best.
I don't have nearly the history as everybody else has with Patty, but to her work ethic, I will say, she was always there and committed and working hard right up till the last day, mentoring a new person coming in to her role, and just making sure that that transition was going to be smooth for the staff and the students. From everything I'm hearing, it doesn't surprise me at all that she would want to ensure that even as she leaves, that her, her work continues with the kids that benefited so much from her.
And just on behalf of the committee, I just want to thank you, Patty, for your dedication to our students and our district. Undoubtedly, you've made a significant impact on these kids and their families, and undoubtedly some of them are probably in the working world now, using some of the skills that you taught them to make the world a better place. So thank you. Congratulations.
That's a lot of years.
It sure is.
Okay, so where are we at?
So as I mentioned at the top of the meeting, we're going to be moving around a little bit. So the next item that we're going to be taking very much out of order is under New Business, and it's the discussion and approval of the Central Massachusetts Collaborative Capital Reserve Fund.
Yes. So as you know, in a past meeting, we came forward with something very similar from our other collaborative, the Southern Worcester County Collaborative. Tonight, we have Director Susan Farrell here from Central Mass Collaborative, which we are a member district, and Susan is here tonight to request from the school committee to create a capital reserve fund. Susan, would you like to give a little background?
Thank you so much for having me here tonight. On behalf of the Central Massachusetts Collaborative, I am seeking the approval of our member districts to create a capital reserve fund that would support the costs associated with the acquisition, maintenance, and improvement of our fixed assets. The fund, if approved, would be a multi-year financial plan for the evaluation, prioritization, and funding of collaborative projects that are necessary to protect and enhance our educational and administrative programs. Once established, deposits in the reserve are proposed and approved through the budget process. I think you were provided with some documents that explain capital reserve fund under the law. This is something that we can create, and we have been in business 49 years. Next year will be our 50th anniversary. I think that's awesome. You celebrate everything, so I'm throwing that out there. We currently lease three buildings, and they're triple net leases, that we pay for all costs of building maintenance and building improvements. Right now, the collaborative does not have an avenue under the tuitions to generate income to fund any of the projects that we need to do or maintenance that we need to provide. The establishment of the capital fund will provide us with the ability to retain a portion of any surplus that can be used to meet these needs. This would mitigate the need to raise tuitions or rely on member districts for financial assistance should capital funds be needed. The amount of the fund that we're asking for, we cap at $1 million. It would not necessarily need to be filled or kept at $1 million. The fund would again come from surplus that we generate, and the expenditures, if used, would not need to be immediately replenished. The funds would only be added by board approval as available and would not be a burden, a burden to any of our member districts. In order to do this, CMC had to come up with a capital plan, which I believe you received a copy of. That did go to the CMC Board of Directors, who reviewed it and did approve the plan. And now our next step is to come to the member districts to seek approval to actually establish the reserved fund, and that is why I'm here today. If approved and created, the Board of Directors on an annual basis would vote for any amount added and for any funds withdrawn. So it is totally overseen by our member district superintendents. So I am respectfully asking that you consider approving the development of a capital reserve fund for the Central Massachusetts Collaborative. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? Well, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the capital reserve fund for the Central Mass Collaborative.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Desiree, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. Thank you very much, Susan, for coming out this evening and for establishing this one.
Thank you, thank you very much. I will leave this, which just outlines this, and if the chair could sign it and get it to the superintendent, appreciate, thank you very much. We really appreciate your support.
Great, thank you. We yours.
Thank you.
All right. And then, as a continuation of our moving around a bit, the next item that we'll be undertaking under New Business is, the MTA is here to discuss the MCAS and the upcoming ballot question related to MCAS.
You can come up, you can sit there if you want. Yeah, pull up a couple chairs.
This is already on screen? Okay. Hi, I came before you guys. I want to say it was like two years ago. I might be off by a little bit. Back then, it was called the Thrive Act. It was something we were trying to push through in terms of the legislature. Like most things in the legislature, it was extremely slow, and we're technically still trying, but in the meantime, we kind of divided it in half. The Thrive Act was the elimination of the MCAS graduation requirement and the elimination of the state takeover portion. We went with the first half in question two. Question two, that'll be on the ballot in about six weeks now, would be the elimination, if it passes, would eliminate the MCAS graduation requirement statewide, and it would actually, if, again, if it passes, would take place this spring. So it's like immediate. We're here today to ask you, as a committee, to endorse yes on two, which would be just, again, supporting the elimination of the MCAS graduation requirement, half of what you voted to approve or voted to support, excuse me, last time I was here, whatever it was, a year and a half to two years. Are there any questions?
To the chair.
Mr. Adam Atlas?
I think we, didn't we just recently do this?
No.
Someone came before us and asked us for a lot of support that we signed.
That was about a year ago. That's what he's talking about.
That was probably me, and yeah, it was, like I said, it's, it was, that was to support a law we were trying to get passed, which was two things. You can't put two things on a ballot question. So because it took so long, we decided to move forward with a ballot question. We got the signatures over the last year, got enough, it's now on the ballot, and the half we just went with, because again, you can't do two things, you can only do one, would be to eliminate the MCAS graduation requirement. We are one of only eight states out of the 50, obviously, that have a standardized test graduation requirement. I can speak firsthand when I, not when I was a student, I'm too old for that, but when I was a teacher, I had a student who could not pass the science MCAS. It took him three tries. He still did not pass it. The district I worked for had to apply for a waiver to get him, again, everyone's like, oh, he wasn't trying to sneak into Yale, he wanted to join the army, but you need a diploma to join the army, and if you don't pass MCAS, no matter what grades you have technically, excuse me. So in theory, I'm not saying this happens often, but in theory, you could have honors, you know, all As and Bs, and you could still not get a diploma because you didn't pass the MCAS. You would get a certificate of attendance, I believe is what it's called. So that's one of those things we're trying to eliminate. There's also stories, I don't know the exact numbers, but there are stories of people who have dropped out because, you know, they're, they've got passing grades in all their classes, but they can't get through the test, so they drop out. We're trying to eliminate that and have kids graduate based on 12 years of coursework, I guess 13 if you count kindergarten, as opposed to a couple days' worth of testing. I think that's a more accurate, you know, assessment of a student's knowledge and abilities versus a couple days taking a test.
I mean, I know at the time, I was in full support of going forward with this. From my perspective, it's really changed how teachers have been teaching for the past several years, due to the fact they're now teaching to a test rather than having some more creativity, so I would certainly support this. I do know those articles that came out yesterday and today concerning Worcester and Boston, and that the MCAS scoring for both of those districts has been extremely low since COVID, that all those children are way behind in not passing the test. So I do think, while there needs to be some sort of assessment metric to track how students are doing, I'm fully in support of trying to ultimately alleviate this burden on students because some people just can't test well, and ultimately doesn't mean that they're not a good student, they shouldn't be able to graduate with a diploma from a high school that they spent all that time in.
To be clear, just so, I heard what you said, this would not eliminate the MCAS. The MCAS would still exist as a diagnostic to compare districts and, you know, again, to see how everyone's doing. It just wouldn't be a graduation requirement. That's all question two would do, and that's all we're asking you to come out in support of, hopefully.
Just as a point of clarification, if we were eliminating this as a graduation requirement, would it still remain in effect for the second half of what you were orienting us to at the top of your presentation, Ben?
Meaning, if you don't score well, can the state still come and take over?
Right.
Yes.
So, if I may, what does that mean? I mean, I know that we have struggled with students who, for example, I Ready is a benchmark that we utilize to assess student progress. Students understand that that is not a, it's simply a benchmark and not something that's graded or weighted for them to proceed to the next grade, and therefore, we've had some question about the validity of the data with students scoring low because they're not, they're not taking it seriously. What do you anticipate the ramifications of that being for districts with students who may be having solid grades and scoring exceedingly low on the MCAS, and what that might mean for districts being taken over by the state?
I've always looked at, again, as a former teacher, I told my students to take MCAS seriously because it reflected not just on them, but on myself as a teacher, on all the other teachers, and on the district and the schools they went to. So if nothing else, as a point of pride, because as in the current system, right now, the only MCAS test that actually counts for anything is the 10th grade MCAS. The rest of them all count for nothing right now as it is. I mean, when I say nothing, you know what I mean. I don't mean nothing. I mean, there's no, like, you know, nothing hanging over their head saying, oh, if I don't pass this, whatever. It's just something, it hurt, it can hurt the town, it means nothing to the student until 10th grade. So I, it, you know, the district, top down, it's the school's responsibility, I would say, especially the teachers, to try to explain to the students and get them to care. You know, it's a, it's a pride thing. You should want to test well. You know, I would look at it like anything, like the, you know, the California Achievement Test, the Iowas, all those things that existed before MCAS. They never counted. They didn't like, there was nothing, there was high stakes, if you will, but can't say everybody, but I would hope that students would still care. So it's just, it, I think, falls to the district to kind of give them a reason to care, which in theory, they should all be doing now, other than 10th grade already. I hope that answered your question. I think I did.
To the chair, Ms. Millet?
I've, I've given MCAS since it started, and originally, it was about three different grades over the total years. And it was used, it was developed to be diagnostic. I actually even corrected MCAS tests for the state at one point, and it's how you present it to the students, which is, this is so we can see where you need help and how we can improve and help you. Then they get it. But originally, it wasn't even every grade. It was fourth grade, eighth grade, 10th grade. Those are the only grades that took this diagnostic tool. So there is an importance to it as a diagnostic tool, but then it became punitive, which just is not fair to students, because we can have many of our students that can pass a test and some that have a lot of difficulty with this one test. I, I can use my son as an example. One could probably have passed it, the other would have never passed it, but that doesn't mean they didn't pass all their courses. So I think we need to bring it back to what it was originally designed for as a diagnostic tool and get rid of the punitive part of it.
Thank you, Ms. Millet. Unfortunately, I think the question at hand is, right, the removal of the MCAS as a graduation requirement completely? Yeah? Are there any other questions or comments from the committee? Are there any other questions or comments from the committee? No. Is there a desire from the committee to make a motion to support voting yes on two?
Through the chair. I would like to make a motion to, finish that sentence for me, to.
A motion of, of support, a motion to vote on supporting, voting yes on question number two?
So moved.
Right.
There's a motion and a second. Desiree, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for batting out of order.
All right.
The next item on the agenda, we're going to move back to the superintendent's report.
Mrs. Perangeli, we left off with your personnel update. So it looks like we're going to be moving into the instructional leadership update?
Yep. And thank you for your flexibility tonight.
Sure.
Okay. So we'll jump over to instructional, just a couple of small updates. We recently, as you know, last year, we were going through our tier focus monitoring review, and we received our report recently. So we are unpacking that as a team, and we will be sharing out the results with you at an upcoming meeting in regards to that. And in addition to our tier focus monitoring report that we have, we also participated in the Center for School and District Partnerships Progress Monitoring. That was a pilot. This was a survey questionnaire this past spring by our school leaders and district leadership, which was then evaluated by the Center for School and District Partnership and put in a report format and given back to us. So we're also going to be unpacking that report. And this report should give us the ability to reflect on our practices, engage, you know, where we are as a team, if we're on the same page with our instructional practices, and using data to inform those. So we've got a little work to do in the upcoming meetings of unpacking some stuff, but we look forward to working through that. Next, I will, are there any questions about that? Moving on to family engagement, as you know, that is going to be a big focus for us again this year, working on strengthening our home-to-school relationships. And Dr. Patty Mackay is here, and will be giving an update.
Thank you. Good evening again.
Good evening.
Our first district meeting is Friday of this week, and we will set some goals for year review where we ended last year, the family engagement committee across the district. And then we will also pick, we'll also discuss what members are not represented, what, that we want more membership on the committee. So this is happening on Friday. One of the things that we're going to do is review some of the family staff and community surveys that we've done recently. So as you know, each year, we gather family, staff, and community surveys as part of the Title I Needs Assessment. And we also collected that through ESER. That was a requirement for ESER. And this year, something we haven't done in the past, this year, I'm meeting with all of the administrators because the family survey captures questions for the entire district, but also questions per school. So things that pertain just to Park Ave or Webster Middle or Bartlett High School. We had, we sent out a questionnaire also to a community list that we have of some community partners, and we had a couple of responses. Really interesting to get the response from North Village. North Village, the community center at North Village is really interested in partnering with us again for homework help at North Village, which was a program that we had prior to COVID. And we haven't been able to, we've discussed it, but we haven't been able to get that going after COVID, but we'll try again. We also sent out the staff survey. We received 63 responses from the district. And what we asked was feedback on the Family Guardian Compact that everybody gets, as well as what types of programming the staff feels that Title I Funds should support. And so I just want to give an example of what one of those responses was. And it just shows us how like, ask people, and they'll tell you, and you get lots of great ideas. So gathering this type of information is really great. So one staff member said it would be interesting if we could upload a video with this information on various, in various languages, thinking of those parents who either cannot read or prefer just watching something in this age of video. So that's, that's a, that's a nice piece of feedback that we can take with us and maybe create some videos for information for families. What types of programming would you do? Do you think that the district's Title I Funds should cover? 35% of the staff felt that we should provide family workshops and other family engagement activities, which ties into all of this work. 25% for academic interventionists, 12, almost 13% for supplemental instructional materials, professional learning for educators. So we're always looking at, okay, we uncovered a problem of practice. Not only do we need to take actions related to the what we're teaching, the how we're teaching, but how do we support the teachers in doing that as well? And then about 10% for after-school and summer programs, which takes, it's already a large portion of our, of our Title I Funds. And then we did the, the family survey, which we received 78 responses, plus three in Spanish, so about 81 responses. The surveys, I should say, go out in Spanish, Portuguese, and English. So we ask a variety of questions. How do you feel your child is progressing in school? Check the topics that you're interested in, that you would like to hear more about. How well do you think your school provides families, guardians, with opportunities to share feedback and ideas regarding the school's programs and activities? I can say on that, on that question, it was mixed because I think we offer a lot of information, but we haven't yet provided a lot of opportunities for families to give us input and beyond like these kind of, of surveys. So, so that's something that we should take with us and learn and grow from. How do you like, how would you like to see family engagement funds? Things like, have you participated in an open house? What's the best way to communicate with you? Do you understand your child's report card? And how can we improve our partnerships? I'm just going to highlight a couple of, of things per school that I think are, that I think are important. For the most part, families, sorry, just one, one paper, too, too far. Park Avenue received 36 of the 78 responses, and families asked for topics. That included, the, the top two were how to help my child succeed in school and understanding what my child is learning. So when we think about like two-way communication, two-way family engagement, to be proficient in that category, we're really support, we're really supposed to be enlisting families in like helping them access the tools that we have in school, helping them carry that over into home, as opposed to just sharing information, but really working together and creating that partnership. So that really, families are saying like, please help me do this. I want to learn more about what my child is learning in school. And then how to help my, how can I help my child succeed in school? Families at Park Avenue were interested in education materials for home use and family workshops. I guess I'll plug this in here right now. We've been having this mad rush to expend any leftover, any funds that remain unspent in ESER, which runs out on Monday. I'm cheering myself to joy because I'm actually not sure what I'm going to do with myself after ESER is over. But we have purchased materials to utilize during family workshops at Park Avenue, and the, the presence of those materials is much more abundant in the elementary school age than in upper grades for like materials to use at family workshops. But we want families to come in and learn with us how to utilize those tools at home. So we've, we've put some funding into that so that we can make that happen. Okay, moving on to Webster Middle School, 42 responses. Here, families were more concerned, still concerned about understanding what my child is learning, understanding, how do I help my child succeed in school? How do I help my child with homework? And in middle school, we start, we start hearing about families wanting more support for children experiencing emotional distress. And so, so that, that's, that's really important for us to, to remember that. I think we provide a lot of support, but I'm not sure that that information goes out to families in a, in a way that they also understand what we're doing and how to access supports themselves. Educational materials for home use and technology resources were more predominant at the, at the middle school. And at the high school, the difference between, the difference between that and, it was very similar responses, we see the support for students experiencing emotional distress pop up again, but also families wanting workshops on college and career readiness, more workshops on college and career readiness. So this year, the thing that I, that I'm doing is traveling to the schools and talking with, with the principals to help them really understand like what this means for their school and ways that some of those responses, like we're, we're okay doing this, how can we improve on that? We're going to be, we're going to be digesting this at the family engagement meeting as well and asking schools to each come up with some actions that they're going to take away from, from, from this report. The emphasis on, the emphasis on SCL, the emphasis on social-emotional learning. Today, we attended the district team, attended the first social-emotional behavior convening, and we have a district representation, that's myself, plus we have an administrator from each building, we have teaching staff from each building, counselors from each building. And one of those teachers happens to be a special educator, and one of those teachers happens to be an L teacher. And so trying to really make a connection with what we've named in our instructional priority, making sure that no student is left behind in the thinking about SCL and providing social-emotional supports, and really looking forward to this partnership and, and increasing our attention to not just behavior, but the social-emotional mental health piece that goes along with that. I also would like to say that it was very pleasant to be at the open houses of the different schools where it was visible, where schools were encouraging families to sign up for PTO and LPAC and CPAC for, and since our first LPAC meeting is October 10th, just wanted to plug that out there. And our engagement meeting is this Friday. So we're trying to build on what we started last year.
Thank you. And, and I do think this is all great stuff. This is where we need to go. We need to kick it up a notch and take it to the next level. Last year, we really started working on just getting, getting a group together, having the starting conversations, what does family engagement look like? What are we doing that we think is family engagement? And what does it really mean to engage a family? And so this is our focus for this year. We're doing, I think our schools are doing a wonderful job. I definitely have seen an increase, I think, at all of our buildings as far as families coming in and engaging in those family things. It's just now, how do we bring in that other information and tie that in to really begin that partnership with our families, to have that deep connection that's going to keep them coming back and, and working with us with their families and their kids. So I think it's great work, and I look forward to the year. And thank you, Patty, for your report. Are there any questions about family engagement? No? Okay. I'll move on. So just a few other updates. On Thursday, September 12th, I attended the Central Mass Collaborative Meeting in Worcester. The current financial director, Beverly Teft, is retiring after the first of the year. I was asked to participate in interviews for the new director of finance, since my background was in finance. So I got all the fingers pointing at me from each side, which I was happy to do. We had scheduled four interviews. One was a no-show, so we had three. We did put a name forward as an interim director. So Susan Farrell, who is here tonight, will be meeting to conduct a second interview to make a final decision. And we wish Ms. Bev Teft, congratulations in her retirement. I've worked with her for many years. She's a wonderful lady, and I wish her the best of luck in the future. Also in collaborative news, on Friday, September 20th, I attended the Southern Worcester County Educational Collaborative Meeting in Oxford, where they gave us some updates on what's going on in their districts. Like many other districts around the state, they're struggling to hire staff, especially paraprofessionals they are managing, but it's really that support staff that is needed to help with the day-to-day in those rooms that they struggle with trying to bring on. The enrollment at the collaborative has been stable and is starting at a consistent level like in past years, and Webster currently has 13 students enrolled in the collaborative. So I included the agendas. I'm just going to start putting them in your packet, just so you can kind of see the topics that we're discussing on a regular basis. The building renovation project has been keeping us very busy. I'm not going to go into that because Ms. Kontos is going to give you an update, but that is keeping us hopping on a daily basis. So, you know, two years is, can't come fast enough to the completion of the project, but we will get there for sure. And as we kick off the year, we're also submitting all of our entitlement grants. Last year, DESI implemented a new grant system for application and process of the grants, which is GEMS. I will say that the team has done a great job learning to navigate those systems. Did you want to give a quick update of FY '25, where we are with grants? I know we've got a lot going on with grants as we're going through.
I didn't, I wasn't ready for that, so I don't have the figures, but.
Oh, we don't need dollars, just.
Okay.
What's going on, timelines, what we've got.
So we are just waiting for approvals. So this new system, for instance, I write the Title I, II, III, IV grants, and I said, I hit submit, and it goes to Ms. Kontos. Ms. Kontos has to approve the grant submission, and then it goes to the state, and they review it, and then if they need revisions, they send it back. And we, we, they, they either send it to the superintendent to approve, or they send it back for revisions. So we play this like, this game back and forth, but it's, it's really eliminated a lot of the paperwork that we used to have to do, separate signature pages, separate uploads, it's all in this one system. And so it's supposed to streamline.
Streamline? Do we fail at streamline?
Some.
Some. It's getting there. It's, we're navigating, we're doing well with it. It certainly has changed also how we draw down money. It's changed our account structure. Before, you always had to draw down a grant in 10% intervals. So it was a 10-month grant, you would apply monthly, and you'd draw down about 10% of what you were doing. Now, it's actually drawing down by line item, so it's very much more detailed in going in and doing that work. So I think I got out in time for Ms. Kontos to jump in and do it. But it is a good system. We're working, we're, we've gotten our entitlement grants in, all of our new grant structures as the old system is fading away. So it was a learning curve, but I think we're really digging in and mastering it and getting more comfortable navigating the system. So we should be in good shape for the upcoming year, now that we've got a year under our belt. On this Thursday, our district leadership team, the full team, is meeting, and we will, we are going to participate in a Title IX training on Octo, on August 1st. All of the Title IX laws had changed, so we are going to get an update as a district leadership team. So we will be full in compliance with the new laws. In the first few weeks, I've had the opportunity to be at many events and sporting events or, and just being in the school, being in the high school. And I'm, I can't tell you how happy it makes me to see the support we receive from our parents and community, and I just want to say thank you. I, I continue to see an increase in families showing up to events, families showing up to sporting events, and the students just representing us so well at these events. So I'm, I couldn't be prouder and happier, and I just want to thank everybody for their support. And then just to finish my report, this was a fun fact for me. So in your packets, I don't know if, you're all Bartlett grads, so I don't know if you've had this history or you do not have this history. It was news to me. So Amos, the Amos Bartlett portrait. Have you all seen the Amos Bartlett portrait? Do you know about the Amos Bartlett portrait? Apparently, there was some mystery around this. Recently, I was contacted about the portrait that's been hanging in Bartlett for many years. I was unaware of the history of the portrait and wanted to share. Ms. Sarah McKinnis, so you're going to have to take notes on this because this is important because this is like a future thing when you come back. Ms. Sarah McKinnis stated that in 1930- Ms. Sarah McKinnis stated that in 1931, her great-grandfather Bartlett donated the Oil on Campus Portrait of Amos, painted by Edmund C. Tarbell in 1901. This painting hung in Webster schools since 1931, but it went missing for about 12 years after a renovation in 1979. It was noticed missing in 1991. An article was published into the Telegram Gazette about the mystery. It was found, and there was a ceremony to rehang it at Bartlett High School in May of 1991. I included the three articles in your packet for you. You should have, and I think there was a picture, and actually, I saw in the picture tonight, the man behind the door over there, it was his dad years ago, Michael Nalowak, that was standing there next to the picture that was found in the middle school. But there are articles that she shared with me from the Telegram Gazette, there was one from the Times, I think it was, in 19, in the Webster Times, on Monday, October 19th, 1931, about Captain Amos Bartlett portrait presented at the high school. And then there were a couple other articles about the mystery of where it went, and where it was being kept. So Ms. McKinnis was concerned about the renovation at the high school and wanted to know, oh no, where's Amos going? So I did the tour, I walked around, and sure enough, the custodians were able to bring me right to where he was hiding. He is safe and sound, I told the family that he is safe and sound, we'll take good care of him, so no mystery here, but it's something that, these kind of things that we have to think about as we move forward, when the new school's completed, are these things that we're gonna continue to hang, their history, they meaningful to our community, so we wanna make sure he has a nice home and he's taken care of. But I just thought it was fun, and it was something very new to me, I don't know if any of you were aware of that story, if you knew the history of the painting, or, I don't know, do you know?
No, I remember seeing that painting at Bartlett, though, when I was a student there.
Yep. It was hanging right under the main entrance when you came in out there.
Through the chairs, so...
Miss Milet, yep.
It was originally at the old Bartlett.
Yes.
Because, take this the way I say it, that picture was found, and when it was moved over here, Mr. Bartlett wasn't happy, because there were things that happened at the old school, there were stories about that picture being moved out of where it was over here.
Interesting, I'd like to hear those stories someday. So I just thought it was interesting, and it was a fun thing to learn, I love learning things about the school and the past, and there's so many little, even, you know, when they were taking things down for the construction, and you see paintings behind walls, and you see things that were drawn, or just things that hang, it's just, it's just meaningful and important, and I just wanted to share. So that concludes my report.
Well, thank you for that, Mrs. Prangeli. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none. The next item on the agenda is our business manager report. Good evening, Mrs. Kontos.
Good evening, everyone. We're gonna get started with some updates on the building project. First topic is, we have gone out to bid for our request for proposal for technology that was released on 9/17. We've done all of the required advertisements that we need to do. This Friday, will be a pre-bid conference here at the high school at 2:30 for any potential bidders that are interested in bidding for this project. I did report on this in the last meeting, but as a reminder, this is really the vendor that will do all of the integration work of the technology, as well as help with the procurement of the required technology for the project. Also, in your packet this evening is two articles on the warrant for the October 21st town meeting related to the school building project. The first one, Article III, is related to the National Grid easement. Really what this is, is an, an article that's sponsored by the superintendent, and it's required by National Grid as a formality in order to do the infrastructure work that we need to do to supply the power to building, to this building in the new location that it's required. The second one, Article IV, is being sponsored by the town administrator, and the objective of this article is to appropriate the remaining surplus from the feasibility study. There is a surplus balance of $62,921.40, and the objective of this is to take that surplus money and apply it to the construction phase of the project. The warrant has already been approved by the selectmen, the school building committee has already provided their sponsorship and support of Article IV. Just to kinda give you guys some background, on the vote, we had two separate votes for this project, we had one for the feasibility study, and then one for the construction phase, so this is really just taking that surplus money and applying it to the project so it can be used in the construction phase, and it would be put into the owner's contingency. So what, presenting it for you for awareness, number one, and two, to look for your support as we move forward to the town meeting in October. Any questions?
No, sounds very straightforward, thank you for the heads up.
Yep. Do we need to take a vote for the support or, of this?
We can.
We can.
We can, yep.
I will entertain a motion to support the two articles that are being presented at annual town meeting on October 21st, as they were presented by Mrs. Kontos.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Desiree, would you please pull the committee?
Member Atomopoulos?
Yes.
Or Blythe?
Yes.
Member Millet?
Yes.
Kirsty D.
Yes, motion passes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the project's schedule, I'm actually raising it up a level in compared to what I've been providing for updates, because now some of the work that's going on is gonna get repetitive if I keep reporting on it. So three key milestones for you to be aware of. The first is late November. In that timeframe, we will see that the roof insulation and the membrane will be completed at that point, as well as all of the basement framing, ductwork, plumbing, electrical HVAC, fire suppression, and communication will be completed by late November. In early December, we're gonna see key activities on the first and second floor. That will include all of the framing, ductwork, plumbing, electrical, HVAC, fire as well, insulation, drywall, and communication systems. And then the third milestone that I included in here is early January, and that's the rough HVAC and electrical on the roof. Member Millet, in follow-up to the last meeting, you had asked about things being ready before winter does come. I did mention that they were starting to frame with the windows. As we approach the winter months, not all the windows may be in place, but they will be protected with poly while waiting for those windows to come in. I did follow up, and I wanted to confirm that for you. Any questions? They're staying busy, that's for sure. I have another maintenance update, just really related to the Webster Middle School and Bartlett campus. We are really fortunate that we have a really good partnership with the town, and I wanna give a shout-out to Kenny Pizzetti and the DPW, they've been doing work around the campus to trim back, trim back overgrown trees and bushes that either go across our walkways that are touching buildings, they've been working on that. I expect that they'll be back next month, we wanna get some more work done in the student parking lot and get some of those overhanging branches taken care of. So really, we really appreciate all the cooperation and the work that they do to help us out. And then my last, no, not my last one, second to last update is in follow-up to the last meeting, I'm bringing forward in front of the committee the student activities accounts. This is a process that we will do annually going forward to approve the accounts and activities that we have across our three schools. In your packet, you have an individual listing by school, but I'm gonna start with the high level summary. Currently, we have 90 activities that are being managed in our student activity accounts. Of those 90 across all the buildings, we're looking to close 21 of those, and we're looking to recommend three new accounts. So for Park Ave, we are looking to close one account and recommending to transfer that remaining balance into our miscellaneous activities in the amount of $167.82. At Webster Middle School, we're looking to close seven accounts, all of which have zero balances, and they're looking to add two new accounts, one for grade seven and another one for grade eight. At Bartlett, we're looking to close 13 accounts, of which six have zero balances, and seven have remaining balances, and that total is being recommended in the amount of $1,385.73 to go to our PBIS activity account. We are looking to add one new account for the class of 2028. I am expecting that at some point in the future, I'll come back with eight accounts that we're looking to track down class officers, because they did not transfer those funds to an external bank account yet, and that's a key activity that we need to do. So one of the conversations we were having is how do we get to those class officers before they actually leave and move on, and have them transfer that money out? So let me pause, see if you have any questions after reviewing the materials, but we would be looking for support from the committee to validate the accounts that we're looking to keep active and approve those that we're looking to close and create new.
Any questions from the committee about that?
No. I think I just need a motion to approve.
Okay.
Presented.
So I will entertain a motion to approve the closure of the accounts and the transfer of these balances as presented by Mrs. Kontos.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Desiree, would you please pull the committee?
Or Atomopoulos?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes.
Great. Hey, my last update for you is related to special education transportation. We did add an additional in-district bus for Park Avenue this year, that's as a result of additional students that have moved into the district with the requirements in their IEPs related to transportation. So this is an increase for us from two buses for Park Ave to three this year.
Ms. Kontos, the increase in buses, that's a result of not, not being able to not fit all of the students on the bus, but can you just elaborate a little bit?
So they're mini buses, so they're smaller-sized buses, and we hit capacity on those buses, so we range, depending on if there's a nurse or a monitor on the bus, you know, between 15 and 17 on those buses.
I see, okay, thank you for clarifying.
Thanks.
Any questions or comments from the committee? No? Okay. Well, thank you, Mrs. Kontos, for your updates.
You're welcome.
The next item on the agenda is our principal report. Good evening, Ms. Polyafico.
Hello, good evening. All right, so I'm gonna start with our school opening. It was a successful school opening, although the kids are there, so that's great. We have a, we started with a very strong focus on relationships, routines, and our PBIS expectations. We held off on instruction starting for 11 days in order to really support students understanding the expectations, getting to know their student, their classmates, getting to know their teachers. So we're reteaching Expectations at Recession. Our dean, Mr. Aronian, is out there reteaching our Expectations pretty regularly, so we're seeing some success with that, that extended time for the relationship building. We are currently at 771 students. Overall, I believe we had 66 new students enter, our kindergarten class is 142, and our largest grade is grade two with 153 students. Some new things to Park Ave this year, so we do have interactive smart boards in all of our classrooms and student spaces. Those were installed right in the nick of time before classes started, before students came in, but they are all up and running and being used. We did get a new math program this year, as you heard quite a bit about, Eureka Math Squared. We provided professional development to teachers last May, and also in August of this year, over the summer, administration and our coach had some summer PD in supporting that work, and we have additional PD coming up through the year. The program, they'll send a representative come, to come out and do some walkthroughs with us and give us very specific feedback on, on how to improve implementation of the math program. We also provided information on our math program to families at open house, so both written and in presentation. We also said DIBELS is one of our reading assessments that we do three times throughout the year for all, as well as smaller increments for some of our students who are struggling. We did move to online DIBELS this year using M-Class, and again, provided PD for our staff in August. This program, by doing it online, it collects and analyzes the data for us, and it also provides suggestions for small group instruction to really meet the students where they are and what they need. So we've been, we've done that, and now working at making sure of our, all our students are in appropriate groups for instruction. We did have petitions installed, I don't know if you've heard that, that, that job is complete, so we were able to get three additional spaces in the library in some of those NOC areas, and our librarian, Ms. Kennedy, worked very hard, the library is all put back together, it looks fantastic. And we also have a new classroom space in the Race Street lobby with partitions, which will allow our music teacher to go back into one of the dedicated music classroom spaces and no longer have to travel classroom to classroom. So that is really going to be beneficial. One of the spaces in the library will become a dedicated ELL space, and the other two will be dedicated to other student services. Onto events, on September 18th, we had volunteers from MAFRA come as part of their week of giving. We had some volunteers interact with students at recess, we, we put out a survey to teachers on what you needed, what you wanted, and MAFRA volunteers signed up. We also had volunteers that helped our librarian put books back on the shelves and get it back in order. We also had the open, our open house just last week, 45% of our families attended, which is a nice number. We also had outside groups there, the town library was present, Girl Scouts, the MTA was with us, as well as our PTO, and our farm-to-school program also had a table. We also held a family session for families twice in the evening, where we presented information on our new math program, our PBIS programming, and the importance of attendance in school, and how we can work together to make sure students are coming to school and we're meeting their needs to help them get here. We have Real Madrid, Real Madrid basketball up and running until mid-November, that is full with 40 students. As part of the grant, they do provide transportation as well, which is highly utilized, so really helps us increase our numbers for that. Girls on the Run is getting up and running, pun intended, and we also will be having a garden club this year. So we are new, one of our newer teachers, this is her second year, Ms. Waybets, she really took to working with Kelsey in the garden, the community, the school gardens, and so she was able to bring students out, she works in the after-school program and has brought students out, and she really wanted to implement a garden club. So we are getting that up and going, there'll be three sessions for our three seasons, so one will be in the fall, one will be in the winter, they'll do some inside planting and planting, and then one in the spring for moving the plants out to the garden. So yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna be great. Right now, it is small, it's a small group, because it's just Ms. Waybets volunteering her, her love of gardening to run this club, so that might be something we look to growing, pun intended, again, in the future. We also have some, had some PTO events, we had the book fair... We had the book fair running during the back-to-school night, and again the next day, and upcoming, they will be holding their Fall Festival on November 16th. Any questions about any of that stuff I just fired through?
Sounds like great things happening.
Yeah, yeah, it's been a really exciting, positive start to the year, so that's been fantastic. And then, I'm just going to go over some highlights from my 24-25 school improvement plan. It really follows our, our current, which is in its last year, district strategic plan. We have a goal on safe and supportive environment, which is just continuing our work with PBIS and trauma-sensitive practices, especially with the addition of the Social Emotional Behavior Academy that Ms. Mackay talked about earlier. We'll be combining our PBIS team and our trauma-sensitive team together into one to really integrate those, those practices together. We also have some goals around grade-level work expectations for all students. Again, something that's already in place with our new math program, so ensuring that we are providing strong tier-one instruction in math with the PD and intentional planning with our teachers, and also utilizing our, our current structure of our M-Class DIBELS testing to monitor our reading growth, as well as continuing to use iReady. We certainly saw a nice correlation in some of our data work between MCAS, DIBELS, and iReady in terms of what students need. So it's always nice when we know that our systems that we have in place are, are lining up to give us similar information, when we can see it that way. We're also focused on providing equitable learning opportunities, again strengthening our tier-one instruction. That's really what, what being equitable for our students is about, providing high-quality instruction and ensuring our students have access as much as possible for them in the general education classroom. And, again, to Dr. Mackay's point, increasing meaningful family engagement. I have a couple goals in there about opening up family channels to hear what their experiences are, hear what they need, and then plan parent workshops around what we hear from them. I also, so as part, I referenced including feedback opportunities in the newsletter that I send, and most recently, I was able to do one about open house and get, get feedback from them on if they attended, if not, why not? Did they feel that it was beneficial? How could we improve it? So, I've already, I've already got over seventy responses from families on that, so they, they, they want to give feedback, so as long as I'm providing the channels for them to do that, I think we'll, we'll have a lot of success. And, really growing that, so that it becomes part of the feedback loop with families, I think is really important. Any questions on the?
Any learnings from that survey, or are you still unpacking it?
I am still unpacking it. They, they, it's mixed, right? Like, one family, we didn't do the scavenger hunt this year, which has always been something.
Yep.
One family found it to be really great, because it felt much calmer, without the kids wanting to run around to everywhere to get the stamp, and another family said that they missed out on things from not having the scavenger hunt. So, to me, that says, okay, let's find ways to make sure they get all the places without the chaos of the kids just wanting to run through it as fast as they can.
Yeah.
We got some feedback about having, having language support at our, at our back-to-school night, so we have, you know, we have pocket talks, which allow for translation. So just looking into, are we, are we utilizing these, those, are we leveraging the tools we already have to make it the most accessible for all of our families?
That's great.
Yeah.
You know, good deal. Any other questions or comments from the committee? Well, thank you for your updates.
Thank you.
This is the first time in nine years I wasn't at the opening, the back-to-school night.
I know.
It was a little weird.
Yeah.
But it sounds like it went great.
Yeah, it did.
The next item on the agenda is our student representative update. Good evening, Hope.
Evening. For my updates to start, I have, in the past week, we completed, grids nine through twelve completed iReady benchmark testing in math. These were also made up for those students who were absent or missed out on the nineteenth and the twentieth. We also had study sing English benchmarks for CP and honors classes on the, on the eighteenth through the twentieth. We had Bartlett High School Picture Day, which was held the seventeenth. Retakes will also be held November first for any student that may have missed out. And then, we have after-school clubs and activities that have officially completely started up again. For upcoming events, we have quite a few. At the end of Novem, at the end of October, we have a PBIS event, town, it's the townwide trunk-or-treat. Every student and their family is welcome to join. We also have exciting news of welcoming, welcoming a unified sports team to Bartlett. I'm, they, I'm proudly a participant. We will be, this entails that we will be competing, competing with other districts that also have unified athletics, and we have our first practice this Thursday, the 26th. We have fundraising opportunities that are openly being brainstormed right now in student council, National Honor Society, and student government. One that I know I'm part of, we have the senior yearbook students are working to get approval for fundraisers referred to as haunted hallways. We, it entails that students will be volunteering to dress up and decorate hallways, and it will be an event held for all district families and of all grade levels. So we're working on getting the details for that through. We have our homecoming theme that has officially been finalized. It's a neon theme, and the dance will be October 12th, and the tickets will be for sale at lunch for $20. We also have, we also have homecoming T-shirts sold by Mr. Janice for $10, and they will be in class colors and tie dye with the Bartlett logo across the front. And then finally, we have the National Honor Society Trading Post is thankfully being reopened again this year. We're looking into collaborating with the student council as well, so we can have more people volunteer and help out. We have the cleaning of the trading post in the works. We haven't had a finalized date yet, but we're hoping to get that done soon. And that's all I have for tonight.
Those are some great updates, thank you. Any questions or comments from the committee?
Through the chair.
Ms. Poly?
Hope, for the unified sports events, do you know how, you know, if I wanted to go, if we wanted to go and support, do you know, or maybe you, Ms. Parenti, will be able to get the word out, or ask Tony, just to kind of let us know when those are? I know I didn't know about them last year for the middle school, so it's just something I think would be great.
We do have a schedule, so we can work on getting that posted.
Okay.
So we can have more support.
Yeah.
Everybody that was invited to participate received a schedule before they confirmed if they could or could not do it.
Okay.
So, we have our schedule of our practices and all of our games, along with the times and locations.
Right, perfect. And for the trading post, do you know, and you might not, are you still in, are you in need of more donations, or are you, do you, you won't know that until you're done cleaning and organizing?
We're not 100% sure.
Okay.
But we can, we always accept donations, because no matter what, we always, there's always an event, like DECA, a lot of students need clothes, like business casual clothes.
Okay.
As of right now, last year, I know we had a lot to offer, and this year, we're working really diligently to get the word out for more students, because a lot of students didn't know we even offered it.
Right.
We have a lot of homecoming dresses, we have a lot of prom dresses, any student that really, like, needs something, needs help, it's all confidential, so we won't be saying who comes in and who comes out. All we do is sign out what article of clothing was taken.
Okay.
Everything is completely free, and donations, as of right now, that, as of what I know, are open.
Okay. Is it just clothing? It's not food, right? It's just clothing at this point?
No, it's clothing and shoes. I know socks are really popular. We need a lot of socks. Shoes, we've had cleats for sports, which opens up more people to be able to join sports teams. We've had a lot, and I know if, hopefully getting the word out this year will open more opportunities to more students that may not have the availability to these articles.
Great, thank you.
That'd be great. Thanks, Hope, appreciate your updates.
Very nice, you're done.
There are no items under old business on our agenda, so moving into new business, we covered the first item already. The next item is policy ACA, non-discrimination on the basis of sex. It's a first reading. Ms. Parenti, anything you want to say about that?
Just that we are coming back, the Title IX laws changed, so the attorney's updated some of our policies. I apologize, the first, we thought we were doing our due diligence, so the first, there's a few that you approved just recently in the spring of last year that are being updated as of August. The one I shared with you doesn't have the Webster Public Schools in, but that is in the policy, so we'll make sure it's there the next time you have it.
Thank you. Should we take these policies as a group, if they're all first readings, or should we do them individually?
I think it's up to the committee. I can tell you, out of, I can tell you which policies that we had in place already that are being updated, and then there are a few policies that are new, that you haven't seen before.
Okay, maybe we'll take them individually then.
Okay.
So, is that it on policy ACA?
Yes.
Okay.
So that is an update.
Thank you. And then, policy ACAB, sexual and sex-based harassment and retaliation, also a first reading.
Yeah, and that is also an update.
Policy ACAR, non-discrimination on the basis of sex under Title IX, including sex-based harassment, first reading.
And this is a new policy that is being added.
Policy ACGA, civil rights grievance procedure, first reading.
Yeah, new policy being added.
Yep. Policy ACGB, Title IX, sexual discrimination grievance procedure, first reading, also new read?
Yeah, new policy.
Any questions or comments from the committee about all of those first readings? The next item on the agenda is the discussion and appointment of an interim director of Student Support Services. Ms. Parenti?
Thank you. So, as you know, our student service director, Ms. Kathleen Barris, will be retiring on October 31st after twelve years with the Webster Public Schools. I am recommending to the committee, I would like to appoint Ms. Sherry Hare as the interim director of Student Support Services, to serve until June 30th, 2024. Ms. Hare has been an employee of the Webster Public School since August 20th, 2018. She has served in the role of team chair for, out of district and preschool, and also at Webster Middle School until July 1st, 2023, when she became the assistant director of Student Support Services and Equity. Before that, Ms. Hare was a special ed teacher for twelve years. Ms. Hare is a licensed special education director, has her master's in educational leadership, and is more qualified, more than qualified to fill the role. As you know, I reported before that the plan is after the first of the year, we will conduct a more formal process to name a permanent director, and I would request that the school committee approve my recommendation to appoint Ms. Sherry Hare as the interim director of Student Support Services.
Thank you, Ms. Parenti.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Ms. Sherry Hare as the interim director of Student Support Services.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Desiree, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Parenti, and thank you, Ms. Hare. The next item on the agenda is the acceptance of donations, twenty-five backpacks from the Greek Orthodox Church to the Webster Middle School.
Yep. I would like to thank the Greek Orthodox Church, Ms. Faith Veronis, and Father Luke for their donation, always great partners for the Webster Public School, and we appreciate their support. So I would recommend acceptance of the donations.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions or comments from the committee? Now, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept the donation of twenty-five backpacks from the Greek Orthodox Church to the Webster Middle School.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Desiree, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the review, transfer signing of warrants, bills, payroll, A motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Desiree, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes, meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone.